School Board of St. Lucie County to order. It is my pleasure to welcome all of you with us tonight. Thank you for being here. We're in for a real treat as we are entertained by the students from Lawnwood Elementary under the direction of Ms. Kim Evans. At this point, I would like to ask students if you would help us as we pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now if you'll join us in the Kids at Hope pledge.
As an adult and a trans woman, I am committed to service for all the talents, skills, and intelligence that exist in all children of you. I believe all children are capable of success and of growth.
Thank you. And now-
with freedom song."
Woke up this morning with my soul, stayed on freedom. Hallelujah, 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 hallelujah. I'm gonna walk it, talk it, sing it, shout it. Hallelujah, I got my mind on freedom. Walk it, talk it, shout it. Clap my hands, I think my mind on freedom. Walk it, talk it, shout it. Clap my hands. Oh, freedom on my mind, on my mind. Oh, freedom in my heart, in my heart. Oh, freedom in my soul, in my soul. I'm gonna walk it, I'm gonna talk it, sing that freedom song. I'm gonna walk it, talk it, sing it, shout it. Hallelujah, I got my mind on freedom. Walk it, talk it, sing it, shout it. Clap my hands, I think my mind on freedom. Walk it, talk it, sing that freedom song. Woke up this morning with freedom, stayed on freedom. Woke up this morning with freedom, stayed on freedom. Woke up this morning with my soul, stayed on freedom. Hallelujah, I'm gonna walk it, hallelujah, I'm gonna talk it, sing that freedom song. I'm gonna walk it, talk it, sing it, shout it. Hallelujah, I got my mind on freedom. Walk it, talk it, sing it, shout it. Clap my hands, I think my mind on freedom. Walk it, talk it, sing that freedom song. Walk it, talk it, sing that freedom song. Walk it, talk it, sing that freedom song.
Fabulous, boys and girls. You know what? I woke up this morning excited about hearing you all sing tonight. I'm so glad you're here with us and sharing your gift of voice with us tonight. I want to ask you, young man, what made you join the chorus and sing?
Um, I just felt like I was good at singing and I wanted to perfect it.
Good for you. And you're right, you are good at singing. Keep it up. You've got some talented youngsters here. And how about you? What's appealing about chorus to you?
Well, I was in the talent show last year and the year before. And I liked singing, so I joined it.
Good, good, good. One more. Let's talk to this young lady. What do you like about singing in the chorus?
Um, because that, um, because I like, I like the sound of it and the wave of it, how it feels and how it feels in my heart. I like singing in chorus.
What more can I say? Any parents, grandparents, friends, school members that are here to support these youngsters,
We're going to begin by calling our Teacher of the Year and School Related Employees of the Year together under the direction of Executive Director Jim McKenzie, who will
please stand so that we can tell you how appreciative we are.
recognize our individuals of honor.
See, we've got several coming along here too.
Madam Chair, Board Members, Superintendent Yost, thank you very much for this opportunity to present to you the finalists for the School Related Employee of the Year and Teacher
Ms. Jackson, you need to be sure you get them signed up there, okay? Great. That's right.
of the Year.
Thank you so much for being here and for your students.
With those awards being recognized at our Night of the Stars event on Saturday, February
And we'll give you a few minutes to file out.
22nd, we do encourage you all to attend. I know you will. We've gotten RSVPs, but it's going to be another great event. A hundred and fifty-one employees that work for your school district will be honored for what they do for students and the success of our students in St. Lucie County. With that, we have a number of our board members here, and obviously, pictures are always fun, so I'm going to ask them to come up and just form a line, board members, for the foundation. An important person that has really worked to make sure that the proceedings for next Saturday's event go according to schedule is Candace Stone. And she is your district representative for employee recognition. And I'd like to have her join me as we call out the names of the individuals that are the finalists for this year. The school-related employee this year, those plaques are going to be presented by Carissa Zarga, who is our incoming chair in July. First is, as a finalist from Alapata Flats, Adella Delacruz. I have three finalists for the Teacher of the Year, and I'm going to ask Elizabeth Malanies to present those plaques. From Oakhamak K-8, Heather Boletho. As you all know, I won't be calling out names on Saturday night. From Fort Pierce Central High School, Matthew Boswell. And from Fairlawn Elementary School- Yeah, get used to the receiving line, there'll be a lot of that. And this is sort of special, and I wish I knew this ahead of time, but this finalist for Teacher of the Year was a student for Elizabeth a number of years ago. We won't say when. From Fairlawn Elementary, Kelly Riedel. Madam Chair, Board Members, and Superintendent, these folks are our finalists. As you know, in each one of these categories, those individuals will, the individuals selected next Saturday will go on to state competition to represent your school district and your employees. And the foundation is very pleased to have been a part of the process, and we thank you for the opportunity to be a part of the process. Thank you. We're probably going to have to get everybody together.
We'll look forward to seeing you on the evening of February 22nd. And we greatly appreciate the Ed Foundation and the support they offer to our Teachers of the Year, as well as our School Related Employees of the Year. All of our employees are special, and we thank them for recognizing them. Our next order of business is the African American History Month proclamation. Dr. Kevin Perry.
Madam Chair, School Board Members, Superintendent Yost, a close scrutiny of the Florida Statute 1003.42 requires instruction in the history of African Americans. The teaching of African and African American history and culture incorporates the contributions, culture, and influences of Africans and African Americans in shaping the United States and the world, and is essential in promoting the appreciation of diversity so necessary for success in our world. The St. Lucie County School Board has a rich and storied history of celebrating Black History Month, and in doing so, has taken steps to adapt curriculum in a dynamic, integrated document with active and reliable sources. Since its inception in 1926, Negro History Week and Black History Month have been given annual themes, the first of which was simply "The Negro in History." Black History Month is set aside for all Americans to learn of the struggle for freedom and equality, and to honor and celebrate the achievements of black men and women throughout history as they helped to shape these United States of America. Here to present the proclamation for African American History Month is Mr. John Leslie, Assistant Principal at Westwood High School, who was the district's official chaperone for our students who competed in the International Science Fair in Phoenix, Arizona last year. And I'd like to point out to those that are listening that both of those students have active patents, both of those students have been admitted into Harvard, and they have over $120,000 worth of scholarships. And Assistant Principal Candace Stone, Assistant Principal at Lincoln Park Academy. Ms. Stone also serves as our District Coordinator in Employee Recognitions. I am sure we're all looking forward to seeing the fruits of her labor next week at our annual Night of the Stars. Please welcome Mr. Leslie and Ms. Stone.
Whereas, the St. Lucie County Board of Education takes pride in joining Americans throughout the country and various parts of the world in recognizing February 2014 as National African American History Month. And whereas, African American History Month celebrates the contributions that African Americans have made to American history and their struggles for freedom and equality, and deepens our understanding of our nation's history. And whereas, National African American History Month has its origin in 1915 and was initiated in 1926 by Dr. Carter G. Woodson as Black History Week during the month of February as it coincided with the birthdays of Abraham Lincoln and Frederick Douglass, two key figures in the history of African Americans. And whereas, in 1976, this commemoration of black history in the United States was expanded to Black History Month. And in 1986, President Ronald Reagan proclaimed that the foremost purpose of Black History Month is to make all Americans aware of the struggles for freedom and equal opportunity. And whereas, in 1996, President Clinton's proclamation emphasized the achievements of black women from Sojourner Truth to Mary McLeod Bethune and Toni Morrison. And-
Whereas, in 1994 and 2002, the Florida Legislature passed legislation to ensure that African and African American history content is taught in schools. The St. Lucie County School District continues to take the necessary steps toward the infusion of African and African American history curriculum as part of the content taught and studied through pre-K through 12th grade. And whereas, the St. Lucie County School District recognizes the significant contributions African Americans have made in our country, state, nation, and the world in education: medicine, art, culture, public service, politics, and human rights. And whereas, this year's theme, Civil Rights in America, the history of civil rights, the United States is largely the story of free people of color, and then African Americans to define and enumerate what rights pertain to citizens in civil society. The Association of the Study of African American Life and History has selected this theme to mark the 50th anniversary of the 1964 Civil Rights Act. And whereas, it is appropriate to call our schools and the community to observe this month with programs, activities, and ceremonies, and for our school board to recognize and promote these observances district-wide. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the School Board of St. Lucie County do hereby proclaim February 2014 as African American History Month.
Madam Chair, we respectfully request that you recommend the adoption of the 2014 National African American History Month proclamation.
Madam Chair, I recommend the board adopt the African American History Month proclamation as presented.
Board Members, we've received the recommendation. Do I have a motion? Moved by Ms. Hensley. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ingersoll. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, Board Members, and thank you to our administrators for presenting our proclamation for the month of February. Thank you, Mr. Leslie, Mrs. Stone, and Dr. Perry. As we are cruising to excellence in St. Lucie County, it is very fitting that we call Dr. Mark Rendell to the podium to introduce us to a national Teacher of the Year.
Thank you. Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Superintendent Yost, and members of our viewing audience, we have the opportunity tonight to honor one of our educators who have, who has received a national award. In order to do that, I'm going to ask for some help, though. I need the current administration from Fairlawn Elementary. I need some representatives from local VFW Post 8058, and the one and only Shirley Hilton to join us up here. Oh, and also Nell Moyers, a former educator from Fairlawn Elementary, needs to come up. So if you all could come up. Starting in 1999, the Veterans of Foreign Wars and its Ladies Auxiliary have recognized teachers in grades K through 12 for their promotion of citizenship education in their classrooms with a national awards program. Since its inception, the VFW has honored thousands of classroom teachers. Each national winner, and we have a national winner, receives an award and $1,000 for the teacher's professional development at his or her school. In addition, they will receive an all-expenses paid trip to the VFW National Convention in July. There is a national winner for the elementary school level, the middle school level, and the high school level. The 2013-2014 VFW National Citizenship Education Teacher of the Year for the elementary grades is none other than our own Shirley Hilton, a teacher at Fairlawn Elementary. Now, before we do any more, I'm going to ask Sue Keller, who's the first Vice President of the Ladies Auxiliary, to come up and talk a little bit about the selection process so we know just how prestigious this award is. Sue?
Well, I think Shirley's taking this better than I am because I still can't imagine overseas in all these states, and here we are. Shirley won on a local basis, right here in Fort Pierce, at our local scholarship award program as Teacher of the Year. From there, we sent her on to district, which covers like about five counties, Stewart, Okeechobee, Sebastian, those areas. She won in District 11. From District 11, the process takes her to Department of Florida, so that's all of Florida. She won there. Lots of emails, winner, winner, winner. From there, at this point, she puts her whole story in a book, and the books are put together, and she tells everything that she's done. It's quite a process, quite an elimination process, and we got the news after she went to Orlando for Florida, about two days later, that she got national. That's all the states. We haven't got formal notice yet as to how many entries, but last year, there were 60,000 entries for the teacher from K-5. This takes all the states in. Also, overseas applications are accepted. So this is quite an award. We're very proud of her. It's been a long process, and we're there. Thank you, Shirley. We're very proud of you. So proud of you.
So even though Shirley already received an award at the state convention, and she's about to receive a bigger award at the national convention, we still wanted to recognize her for outstanding dedication and achievement with the students at Fairlawn. So Superintendent Yost has a plaque to present to you, and then we'll take some photographs.
It's an exciting time for all of us. Thank you to you ladies too, for all you do for the students and the teachers in this community.
In case some of us had forgotten, Mrs. Hilton was a former Teacher of the Year for St. Lucie County as well. So how fitting to be recognized this evening as we're recognizing our current finalists for Teacher of the Year as well. Congratulations again, Shirley. You make all of us really proud.
Let me take this opportunity to remind those of you that may want to be an unscheduled speaker tonight, that there are forms in the back of the room that you can get and fill out, and just get them up to Mrs. Harrison before the beginning of our business meeting. Superintendent Yost?
Yes, ma'am. If we move to our special thanks and recognition, our star award, Mrs. Michelle Digger would like to come forward and recognize some of our outstanding employees, representative of the employees that serve our students each and every day. Ms. Digger?
Good evening. Tonight, I have the pleasure again, for the second time, to recognize some extraordinary employees that work for our school district. You know, each and every day, our parents send their children to school, expecting their children to come back with more knowledge than what they got, and also to come back safe and sound. On Friday evening, two teachers, two coaches, had the opportunity to actually make sure that a child came back safe. More specifically, on Friday evening, there was a student that wasn't feeling very well on the football field. The coach asked that student to have a seat, relax, cool off, and come back when you're feeling a little bit better. The student came back up, and the student fell out. When the coach saw that the student fell out, the coach went up to the student and realized that the student was unresponsive. Not only was the student unresponsive, the student was not breathing at all. The coaches that were there immediately responded to this child's need, even to the point where they had to go and grab an AED, an Automated External Defibrillator. This is a portable device that's used in cases of life-threatening cardiac arrhythmias. Because of the quick response and the detail paid to this student, this student was completely responsive by the time that 911- out, and just get them up to Mrs. Harrison before the beginning of our business meeting. Superintendent Yost?
Yes, ma'am. If we move to our special thanks and recognition, our star award, Mrs. Michelle Digger would like to come forward and recognize some of our outstanding employees, representative of the employees that serve our students each and every day. Mr. Digger?
Good evening. Tonight, I have the pleasure, again, for the second time, to recognize some extraordinary employees that work for our school district. You know, each and every day, our parents send their children to school, expecting our, their children to come back with more knowledge than what they got, and also to come back safe and sound. On Friday evening, two teachers, two coaches, had the opportunity to actually make sure that a child came back safe. More specifically, on Friday evening, there was a student that wasn't feeling very well on the football field. The coach asked that student to have a seat, relax, cool off, and come back when you're feeling a little bit better. The student came back up, and the student fell out. When the coach saw that the student fell out, the coach went up to the student and realized that the student was unresponsive. Not only was the student unresponsive, the student was not breathing at all. The coaches that were there immediately responded to this child's need, even to the point where they had to go and grab an AED, an Automated External Defibrillator. This is a portable device that's used in cases of life-threatening cardiac arrhythmias. Because of the quick response and the detail paid to this student, this student was completely responsive, respondent by the time that 911 responded to the school. The student was alert because of Joshua Schaefer and Evan Muldoon. So tonight, tonight, we want to give special thanks and recognition to these two employees for their timely and selfless response in assisting in saving the life of one of our student athletes. We truly thank you for putting our students first and putting their safety first. If the two employees, Joshua Schaefer and Evan Muldoon, would come up. Not only are you receiving these certificates, but we also have a lanyard for you, and we would love for you to have dinner on us.
And before I present these, if we can get Mr. Estef to come forward also. He is the volunteer coach who went into action along with these gentlemen, and if he could come forward, we would greatly appreciate recognizing him for not only what he did for this child, what Cobra pride, as well as St. Lucy County pride. We thank all of you gentlemen for putting children first.
You'll remember that a couple years ago, the LeLu family, in honor of their daughter, Jessica Clinton, began donating AEDs to our schools for moments just like this. And we are thrilled to have them with us this evening, because without their efforts, this may not have ended in such a positive story. It's a great, happy ending, and we thank all of them for their efforts. Thank you.
Are we doing one more picture?
from Fort Pierce Central High School. So, how do I recognize my employees? It is very simple. At this time, all you need to do is recognize someone who is doing something exceptional at your school, someone who really stands out. And it's simple. Just send me an email with details about that particular employee. I will share that with Superintendent Yost, and at that point, she will go through, and we will pick two Star Employees for the next board meeting. So, be on the lookout for those who are doing extraordinary things, that have the skills and behaviors that we are looking for, and let's make sure that we honor them. Thank you.
Wow, it has really been a night, just with the, the rewards and the accolades. It's a really, really fabulous school district that we're part of, and my heart is just brimming with pride tonight over all the folks that we've been able to recognize and appreciate, and, and thank you, again, to all of you. It's time now for our CTA report. We welcome you to the podium tonight, although I say you have a hard act to follow now.
It is what it is.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Chair Harley, board members, and Superintendent Yost. As we commemorate Black History Month, I just would like to applaud those young folks who were, that were from Law &amp; Order Elementary. They did a phenomenal job as they did Freedom. And even now, I think about Black History Month, but I also think about human and civil rights. They kind of go hand in hand, and you think about all the things we continue to do, even as we recognize our Star Employees. I think it is to be committed for that effort, to let people know, I appreciate what you do. And that's sometimes said, but not shown, and I'm glad we are an example of what we, of what we say we're going to do. Not what you say, now it's what you do, and we appreciate that. I know this evening, on this consent agenda, we have this calendar for 2014-15, and I just want you to know that we support the calendar as it relates to the time we're going to have for spring break. And I think back when we changed our Thanksgiving, knowing that it is educationally sound. We want to do what's best for students when it comes to the early release days. I would like to say, I appreciate the fact we're going to go back to where we first started, knowing that we need to send a message to not only the community, but our students to know that we are about business. We are making, about making a difference in the educational impact of all students. I, we personally feel that the Wednesday will lessen the absenteeism for all, which equates to an increase in academic gains. Less absenteeism equals a savings financially. Of course, you know, we're always looking for dollars, because, you know, we don't always get the funding for all those regs that are put upon us each and every day, and especially with the session getting ready to begin. So, we just want to acknowledge that we believe that we will continue to make a difference in the lives of all students with having that, the calendar the way it is designed. When we think in terms of the, end of the semester will end before the Christmas winter break, that's educationally sound. And I know Mr. Ingersoll and I have a common interest on some things, but, you know, we do feel that it is educationally sound to look at the Wednesday, putting it in the middle of the week. There are things that we look forward to being able to do, and as we work in conjunction with the community, let them know that we are about making a difference in the lives of our students, but also the impact of what our teachers and our school-related personnel have to do in the run of a week, knowing that Wednesday is the midway point, and guess what? We take a break, and we keep going, like Ever Reddy Battery. We'll take a licking and keep, take a, whatever it is, but anyway, we'll keep on ticking with it, okay? And lastly, as we are about to enter into the testing arena, we ask parents and the villagers to support our children as they begin the testing timeframe, and follow all the recommendations that the school sends home with the students. Go to bed early. It's good to be outside to play. It's good to go to football practice, soccer practices, and all those, but you got to be able to perform. If you want to excel and move forward, you got to be a test taker and be in the most positive way that you can. Eat a good breakfast. Most schools, I'm quite sure, if we continue as we've done before, breakfast will be a part of the process that all students will have the opportunity to have, a, a free breakfast during that testing arena. But I say all the villagers, because if we're going to be the villagers to make the difference in the lives of students, we all have to tell kids that they're out, it's time, honey, you need to go home and go to bed now. You will see them shopping everywhere. We have to be the people to kind of help parents sometime, guide them to make good choices and good decisions for their students, but we know testing, this is a high-stake test, and we have to encourage our kids to do the best. We don't want to test them out, but we know some things we don't have a choice with, and this is one of the things we don't have a choice with, so we need to make, help them make the best decisions and best choices as we enter into the testing arena. And those are my comments for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tillman. Anyone here from CWA? Ms. Vickers, do you, no report? Well, we're glad you're with us tonight. We'll move now to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda as presented? Moved by Ms. Hensley. Second by Dr. Mills. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. At this time, board members, are there any conflicts that you need to declare with reference to any item we will be voting on? Hearing none?
Comment on a few items?
We'll go there after this. Madam Superintendent, we'll receive your recommendation.
Yes, ma'am. I recommend the board adopt a total of 21 consent agenda items, beginning with 7.1 and ending with 15.1 as presented.
Board members, we have received the recommendation. At this time, are there any items that board members wish to pull for comment? This is comment only?
Item 9.2, 9.3, and 13.1.
Ms. Henson also wants to comment on 13.1. I would like to comment on item 11.1. This time, Dr. Mills, 9.2?
Well, item 9.2, 9.3, I just wanted to bring to our attention that there's a slight typo in the recommended actions for the annual tra, contract for option year two. As I pulled down that particular agenda, consent agenda item, I saw where it had been cleared up on the bottom, but in regards to the recommend, recommended action, I don't know if anybody else noticed it or not, but option year two states that we will renew the contract from 2, February 11, 16, to February 10, 14. So that's going backwards. So that's just a typo that I wanted to bring up, and, and so that we would know that it's there. And 13.1, I just want to compliment our schools and our district, our school district, for the wonderful work and savings that we have with the FPL on our school energy reduction. Just want to compliment you. It's a savings, a total rebate amount of $679,680. That's a lot of money that we have been able to get, a rebate amount of, for our school system. So I just want to congratulate our maintenance department and, and those that are working closely with our, and the different, the three schools that is acknowledged here on our agenda is Port St. Lucie High, Mariposa Elementary, and Southern Oaks Middle School. And again, to our maintenance department, and to those that are involved in this in our different schools, I want to congratulate you on saving us money in the area of energy.
Ms. Henson, did you wish to comment as well?
Basically, the same thing. I think, and for our viewers at home, they may not realize, when we talk about some of these wonderful things that happen in the school system, there's so many things that we can't control because of the way the budget is done in the state of Florida, and there's certain givens that we can't control. And actually, electricity is really hard to control, but through the team with Mr. Sanders and, and John Gillette, and I see so many of the people here, Bob Massa, all of you really should stand up and take a bow, because it, it is a team, that effort that has put this together. And also, when we see our budgets, and sometimes it'll say, well, you know, very large amounts of money to replace chillers at different schools, and yes, it is a large chunk of money, but this rebate proves that we are headed in the right direction in our school district. Sometime, you, you have to invest money in order to recoup these costs, but if you notice yourselves, electricity is not going down in your home, therefore, we have to look at it in a very commercial way and find ways to do what our team has, has done so well over and over every year. So, thank you to our team that works on that.
Madam Chairman, I just want to make a comment, too. It's their work that did it, but just remember in August and September, when people call and have issues, that it feels good in Sep, in February. Just want to make sure we all remember that. And thank you for holding your guns in August and September, because not many people remember February.
Thank you, Mr. Ingersoll.
I think you'll know what I'm talking about.
I would like to comment on item number 11, which was the proposed school calendar. I, I just want to offer my thanks and appreciation to Dr. Mark Rendell and his committee for working on this calendar. I feel like it's, it's, I'm not sure what the word is. I'm speechless, actually, because for years, we have been pushing for some changes, and I am just so proud and honored that the committee took those suggestions to heart. I firmly, firmly believe that by moving our early dismissal days to Wednesdays, we will have better attendance. For the first time in a lot of years, we have, what is it, Dr. Rendell, 29 uninterrupted weeks of education that will happen, and that's been, long been the goal of this board. So thank you for your work on that. Dr. Rendell, if you could stand and share with us the names of the folks that served on the committee with you. I hate putting, just give representation of the folks that were on there, so that our community is aware. And I also want to add that last night, Dr. Rendell presented this calendar to the District Advisory Council, which is comprised of parents, faculty, staff from each of our schools, and they each had the opportunity to interject their thoughts with the calendar as well. So thank you for being part of that as well.
Madam Chair, the official members of the committee, Mr. Terrence O'Leary was on the committee. Representing our administrators was Lilian Beauchamp. Also on the committee, representatives from the bargaining units, Vanessa Tillman and Vicky Rodriguez, as the official members of the committee.
Thank you so much for your work. Okay, board members, we've received our comments. Are there any items that you wish to pull for separate discussion and therefore separate vote? Hearing none, we have received the recommendation. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Moved by Ms. Henson, second by Dr. Mills. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. We now move to our other items of business. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, ma'am. We have all five votes.
We're learning.
We now have all five votes.
Madam Chair, the official members of the committee, Mr. Terrence O'Leary was on the committee. Representing our administrators was Lilian Beauchamp. Also on the committee, representatives from the bargaining units, Vanessa Tillman and Vicky Rodriguez, as the official members of the committee.
Thank you so much for your work. Okay, board members, we've received our comments. Are there any items that you wish to pull for separate discussion and therefore separate vote? Hearing none, we have received the recommendation. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Moved by Ms. Henson, second by Dr. Mills. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. We now move to our other items of business, Madam Superintendent?
Yes, ma'am. We have all five votes entered.
We're learning.
We now have all five votes entered, and we will move to other business findings of fact, conclusions of law, and penalty and order, final orders. I recommend the board approve findings of fact, conclusions of law and penalty, and final orders number 294 through 304, 304 as presented.
Board members, we have a recommendation. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Mills.
Second.
Second by Ms. Henson. All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero.
I have it over again, please, you're moving to the...
Okay, I'm sorry. It was moved by Dr. Mills, second by Ms. Henson. And it was a unanimous five zero vote. Board members, if you would do your electronic vote now. Okay, thanks. Don't hesitate to slow us down, Ms. Harrison. We wanna be sure it's all recorded properly. Madam Superintendent, time for your report.
Yes, ma'am. And I should begin by commending you all on the electronic voting. We have come a long way in the last couple of meetings, so kudos to all of you. As some of you mentioned, we had a consent agenda item that addressed savings from FPNL, and I'd like to ask Marty Sanders to come forward with his team at this time, please.
I probably don't need to be here. You guys know the story better than I can tell it. And it's exciting that we have a leadership team of the board and the superintendent that knows more about seasonal demand rates and FPNL rebates, ice plants, and air conditioning design than many graduate engineers and mechanical engineering. So it is refreshing that we have that kind of support. You know, this isn't something new to the school district. We've embarked on this for, really, very intensely for over five years now. And in that past five years, we have a team working on energy management ideas. And that team consists of our energy manager, Sean Murray, who can't be here tonight, he really hates he can't be here, but he had personal business out of town that he couldn't be here for, John Gillette. And then we have a couple others here. We have FPNL is here, we have the utility companies on our team, we also have consulting engineers, architects, and others that volunteer their time to produce ideas to allow us to save energy. And those come not only in the rebates that we get from Florida Power and Light, but they also come in the means of annual savings on our utility bill. This year, our utility bill hovered under, just under $7 million, about $6.9 million, and that's down from 12 million five years ago. So it's a tremendous effort by the staff. And as Mr. Ingersoll referred to, it's also a sacrifice by the staff of allowing us to cut the air off as quick as we can to balance the use and the demand that gives us those savings. Florida Power and Light has an interesting program that is a win-win. They, allows them to curtail their demand in the peak times and then sell us power at a much, much lower rate. So we win by curtailing our use and get power at a lower rate. They do not charge us any demand for the power that we use outside the demand window. And they, in turn, can use their power plants more efficiently and not have to build new power plants. So with all that said and done, I'd like to introduce Jim Aubrey. He's with FPNL, and he has a check to present.
Thanks, Marty, and thanks for having me up here tonight. Marty and his team are a pleasure to work with, and this is fun stuff, coming and getting to bring a check. I hope I get to do this at least once a year and at least until I retire. So Marty, and the school board, I'd like to present you a check for $679,680.
Thank you. It's been a week where I've had an opportunity to visit kindergarten. I began visiting yesterday at CA Moore, and that continued at Lakewood Park this afternoon, where our kindergarten students held student-led conferences. And it was extremely impressive to see five-year-olds sharing information with their parents, addressing their goals, sharing the work that they had accomplished. They were extremely proud of their accomplishments. And it would be remiss of me not to stress the importance of the parents who were in attendance at Lakewood Park. The children were so proud to have mom or dad present, or both. And it does make a difference in the lives of our students. And what a commitment for parents to report to the school at 1:30 in the afternoon and make that a priority. So we thank the many parents who do indeed stress the importance of academics, and they are present when their children are recognized. And this was a special moment at Lakewood Park for those kindergarteners. It was a pleasure. So I'm looking at Principal Diane Young. Thank you so much for inviting me. It was a great opportunity. And we've had many matters that have come before the board this evening, many opportunities to brag, and I'm sure that we all feel like proud moms and dads sitting up here this evening. It is a pleasure to work with the many outstanding employees throughout the district. And it's great to be able to brag, but it's more important to say thank you to each and every one of you for what you do each and every day. In closing, my comment is that we would like to conduct an executive session meeting on the evening of February 20th at 5:30 in the evening. So I wanted to call that to your attention, and we will send out an invitation.
Make note that that's not a regularly scheduled board meeting night. It's a Thursday evening.
We'll check your schedules for confirmation. It's a Thursday evening, February 20th. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Mr. Harold, do you have a report? Thank you. We will move to board member reports, and Mrs. Hensley, we'll start with you tonight.
Yes, ma'am. Mostly announcements. The Health Access Network is going to have its annual meeting on the morning of February the 25th at the Cobra Cafe. It was decided that we were going to not go to a commercial venue. We were going to, for the first time, actually have our kids cook and serve to our community. So I'm pretty excited about that. The whole idea is to be able to have people who are, have a concern or an interest in the Health Access Network to actually find out what our plans are for the future. Also, the treasurer's group that meets with the county commissioner and the mayors and the school board members, we are setting our legislative priorities. If there's anybody who would like to have some input into that, please let me know. We will make sure that it gets disseminated amongst those, the different members, so we can have that conversation. The Transportation Planning Organization, by the way, which got a perfect audit with nothing but kudos for the first time ever, and the only one in the whole southeast United States region, is going to be taking public input on its long-range plan for the multimodal aspects of the future transportation. It's on the TPO website, so if you're free to read that, give us your input on anything dealing with greenways, bike paths, pedestrians, roads, bridges, airports, and ports. So it's, we are truly looking at input on the multimodal aspects. And our executive director, Peter Buckwald, has been elected chair of the board for the state of Florida, and he is on a national board. So it gives us some input into things that are happening in the state as well as nationally. We will be trying to put together a five-county group of school boards, hopefully the 24th of February, to look at where we are, what we need to be doing right before legislative session starts. And also, for those of you who are interested, I would encourage you to go to the, our TV station and watch the Children's Services Council radio program, which is broadcast on TV.
Thank you, Ms. Hensley. Ms. Henson?
I would say, in the spirit of the African-American month celebration and human rights in general, I don't think it's too soon to start talking about voting. Florida is famous for voter suppression, and I'm very blunt about this, because I believe this is a very serious situation in our state and in our nation. Locally, we have the Children's Services Council, which will be on the ballot, and this is a huge, huge organization to help in our county. At an early learning coalition, looking at our audit, we realized that over $800,000 comes to the Early Learning Coalition through the Children's Services Council. And as you know, the Early Learning Coalition serves many, many, many children in poverty, foster care children, children in, taken from homes and abusive situations. The Early Learning Coalition cannot afford to lose that money. None of us can afford what the Children's Services Council does for our community. So I hope you'll all be thoughtful, whether you're registered to vote or not, get your neighbors, get your friends, get everybody on board, because before we know it, it's going to be time to vote, and it's a really serious situation. And I hope everybody who loves children and wants to do the right thing for children will get on board with the campaign for the Children's Services Council. I'm not on the board, so I'm allowed to talk about it.
Thank you, Ms. Henson. Dr. Mills?
I'm not on the board, so I'm allowed to talk about it too. And I agree with Ms. Henson, she says what's her name? Because, I mean, tremendous, from the time of inception, our nonprofit organization has benefited. And for those of you that don't know, we're located right on Avenue D and 17th Street, right in the midst of a very needful area for the children that we serve. And we would not have been able to do it, really, because everybody needs money. So I hope and pray that everybody goes out and vote, whether you're for them or not. Same thing with our own elections coming up this year. You know, many times you lose good people, the people that you want, simply because you don't go out and vote. So I also encourage you to get out and choose the one that you would like to serve the community. I also wanted to say another kudos. We all went to the Port St. Lucie High School drama production, and that was a lot of fun, sitting with all of our administration. So many people showed up, and the board, and so forth. And I don't know if that was a new thing, first time, but that was nice. I enjoyed that very much. Even more so, we enjoyed the production. Port St. Lucie High, you did a wonderful job in your performance, and the acting was just phenomenal. And of course, kudos to their drama leader as well. We have another high school that's doing a drama production, and that will be held in March. It's Fort Pierce Central High School. And their art department will be performing the Broadway musical, Little Shops of Horrors, on March the 7th and the 8th at 7:00 PM, and also on March 8th at not only 7:00 PM, but 2:00 PM as well. It will be held in the Fort Pierce Auditorium, and the tickets are $10 for adults and $5 for students. And those tickets will be available at the Fort Pierce Central High School box office. And I'm looking forward to it. It is a comedy musical, and it is a grand-scale production. So I, you know, what's wonderful about our schools and our performing arts is that we can always be entertained here in St. Lucie County, if we, if we want that, and we can get Broadway coming right to us through our students. And they are phenomenal. My gosh, I remember going to Lincoln Park's production that had to do with Anne Frank. And I mean, they perform that woman's life. You would think you would look on Broadway somewhere. So I encourage the community, that we have performances all the time. We have excellent drama department, as well as, as the other arts performing. But you can definitely entertain yourself through our performing arts right here in St. Lucie County.
Thank you, Dr. Mills. Mr. Ingersoll?
Yes, ma'am. I wanna say basically the same thing as Superintendent Yost says, is I am so grateful for the employees of St. Lucie County. I just am so proud of everything that goes on here. Growing up here, and coming back and moving here, and coaching here, basketball, baseball, and football, seeing your kids grow up, and then having to send them off for someone else to coach is a little nerve-wracking. When they're putting on the straps and hitting some other guy is a little concerning. I picked my son up on Friday, and he is stone white, and I say, "Son, what happened today?" Dad, my coach saved somebody. And he said it in a way that was like, he did it every day. This, as soon as that young man passed out, Coach Mountdune went into action like he's done it before. And that just goes to show the dedication of the teachers, of PD, and the development of the union, training our employees on how to do things, so that when the kids around them are scared, senseless, that there is faith, that their coach is gonna take care of them. And it doesn't just stop there. But I can say, my kid's been to Lincoln Park Athletics, my kids have been to Port St. Lucie, and been involved throughout all of St. Lucie County. And I don't care what school they go to, I know my kid is taken care of, both of them. Not only that, at 2:00 in the morning when they're getting home from athletic events, I know the coaches are there. I know that Saturdays come in, and there's algebra at both schools, where teachers are giving up their time to tutor our students. You know, they don't get paid extra, some of these, they're willing to do that, where teachers come in early in the morning to take care of your child, to make sure that your child will get the best. What bothers me is when parents come in and say, wait until the last minute, say, "What can I do?" Hold on, look at Skyward, they've been emailing you almost every week, helping you out. Parents, take advantage of this. Our teachers give 110%. We need to take advantage of it, because they're doing a phenomenal job. And I'm very grateful for the teachers that my kids have had, and the other kids in St. Lucie County have had too. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ingersoll. I too would like to commend Port St. Lucie High School on their production of MAME. It was quite an honor for all of us to be there for the first time, to have all board members and the superintendent in attendance, along with many of our district staff. And I think we actually pulled off something really incredible in having Mr. Madden be speechless, because we were able to recognize him that night for his 25 years of performances as their leader. So it really was a great night. And for all the nights that ensued, I heard so many positive remarks. It just really, the reputation precedes itself. So I hope all of you had an opportunity to see that production. Remind everyone that this Thursday will be the Regional STEM Fair that'll be held at IRSC. Our folks have been busy this week setting up for it. Some of us, I think, are going to judge and be part of it in that way. But if you have an opportunity to get by there and see all the fabulous science experiments that our young students have put together, please take that opportunity and go visit. And the reminder also that we will get to formally and elegantly honor our Teachers of the Year, our school-related, all of the folks that have been nominated and elected from their schools. We'll celebrate them on February 22nd at the Night of the Stars, which will be held at the Lincoln Park Academy Auditorium. And we look forward to that opportunity, to tell them once again how much we appreciate. And as my fellow board members have said, it really has been an extraordinary week, but we are an extraordinary community, and it does my heart good to be part of it. So let me add my thanks again, and on behalf of all of the board, for everything you do each and every day. So many unsung heroes out there, doing things that we don't even know about. which will be held at the Lincoln Park Academy Auditorium. And we look forward to that opportunity to tell them once again how much we appreciate. And as my fellow board members have said, it really has been an extraordinary week. But we are an extraordinary community, and it does my heart good to be part of it. So let me add my thanks again, and on behalf of all of the board, for everything you do each and every day. So many unsung heroes out there doing things that we don't even know about. But take the time to let us know about them. We want to celebrate with you. We want to let you know how important that you are to us, but most especially to the students that you serve every day. Ms. Harrison, do we have any unscheduled speaker reports? Okay. At this time, the public meeting of the board will be in recess. The board is commencing a private attorney-client session, the estimated length of which is 30 minutes. The names of the persons attending the session are as follows. The members of the school board of St. Lucie County, Ms. Janelle Zarotti-Yost, Superintendent, Mr. Alan Sang, Special Counsel, and Mr. Dan Harrell, School Board Attorney. At the conclusion of this meeting, we will come back in here and reopen the public meeting before we have final adjournment.